10th of September 2019, and I will call the work session to order. This evening, we're going to have a discussion on public hearing policy. And so we'll call on Heather, and you can bring your plate up to the table, Heather, to lead our discussion and present some materials to us for our discussion on public hearing policy. And thanks for your preparation and your slides, as usual. Great.
So, good evening, Mayor and councilors. This is a work session based on the request of you as city council body to talk about your public hearing policies. What I'm going to do is walk you through sort of what's prescribed in state law, what our existing situation is relative to our local regulations, and then leave it open for discussion for you as to how you want to proceed from there. So, tonight's work session focus is quasi judicial land use decisions. City council, in this particular type of land use decision, city council's role is as judges, reviewing evidence and rendering decisions based upon the evidence. So, the wig there is to remind you, you're all putting your wigs on for this particular discussion, and it's a different discussion than what you normally have, which is as policymaking. There are state laws that govern this process and the procedures, and they're in place to protect the property owner, the developer, and the community to ensure a transparent and fair decision-making process. There's a timeframe in which we need to render a decision by state law. That's the 120-day clock that we've talked about with you during public hearings. And it's not, during a quasi judicial land use decision, you're not in a legislative role, so you're not policymakers deciding upon legislative initiatives. With a legislative initiative, there's opportunity to have all sorts of community dialogue, solicit public impact, make discretionary decision-making processes, and there's no timeframe in which to render a decision. So, based on what your request was to us as staff in terms of a work session, we were assuming you wanted to talk about the quasi judicial side of public hearings. So, that's our focus tonight. And let me know if that's off track. So, in terms of the state law review, state law does say that cities need to host a public hearing for certain land use decisions. So, we have to do that. That's part of the public process. Cities need to notify adjacent property owners that we're having a public hearing, and then also provide what the minimum standards are in terms of the criteria in which we're reviewing the project. There's also in state law, it tells you how to notify adjacent property owners. So, the state law is fairly prescriptive when it comes to land use decisions and public hearings associated with them. And I provided to you in your council packet, all the relative state laws that we look at for these types of processes. State law also says that you need to codify a procedure for the public hearing process, and that procedure needs to also satisfy minimum standards that are established by state regulations. So, the state is saying, at a minimum, this is the frame in which you're working as a city when doing a quasi judicial land use, public hearing process. So, we achieve this right now in many different ways, and it's prescribed in our code. We achieve the fact that we have to host a public hearing for certain land use applications, and we have a table that's in our code in Chapter 17, and I provided that in your staff report. We also talk about how we notify adjacent property owners, and that's laid out in the code as well, in Chapter 17. And then, in terms of the procedure for public hearing process, we have that in two parts of our code. One is in Chapter 2, which is general public hearing processes, and then we refine that a little bit further in Chapter 17. Chapter 17 is our zoning ordinance, what we refer to as our development code. So, for land use decisions and public hearings associated with those, we refine the public hearing process a little bit further in that chapter of the city code. State law also says that the city needs to appoint someone or individuals or committees that will serve as hearings officer or hearings body to host the public hearing, and that the hearings officers or hearings bodies need to render decisions based upon evidence and facts. And that's fairly prescriptive in the law as well, to remind people what their roles are. In McMinnville, right now, the Planning Commission and the Historic Landmarks Committee have both been identified as the hearings body for the city of McMinnville. The Planning Commission is the hearings body for most land use decisions. The Historic Landmarks Committee is the hearings body for those land use decisions that are impactful to historic landmarks. And that authority is described in Chapter 2 of the McMinnville Municipal Code. If you recall, we went through a process about a year and a half ago, updating that enabling authority. State law also says that we have to perform in a timely manner. So, cities need to render a decision within 120 days of the application being deemed complete. And that has to also include the opportunity for a local appeal process. So, if you look at how our procedures are set up, we set it up in such a way that we're ensuring that if there's a local appeal process, so right now, you can appeal a planning director's decision to the Planning Commission, you can appeal a Planning Commission decision to the city council. We have to ensure that that timeframe is built into that 120-day clock as we're navigating through the system and the public process locally. So, there's different types of review, and there's some local discretion as to what type of review occurs where. Most cities do do this in terms of having what we would call administrative review and Planning Commission review and City Council review. And usually, it's based on the type of application, the amount of subjective and objective criteria associated with it, and the amount of impact to the community. You'll see in a lot of communities, they describe these as type 1, type 2, type 3, and type 4 land use applications. We don't do that here, but it falls under that same sort of process for criteria. So, we have five, six different processes for review. We haven't used the Miamon one in a while, but we will soon. So, we have a Planning Director's Review without notification. That means it's just straight administrative review. It's permits, for the most part, doesn't meet the checklist or not. We have a Planning Director's Review with notification, where we send out a notification to adjacent property owners, and we say, "We are reviewing this. If you would like to comment to help the Planning Director render a decision, we would like to get your comments by this time." We have applications that go into a public hearing process with the Planning Commission, and that's a lot of what we describe as our type 2 and type 3 applications. So, those are the ones that have a little bit more subjective criteria and probably more impact to the community. And then, we have applications which come to you in public hearing with the city council. And then, we have the McMinnville Urban Area Management Committee. They are the ones who review UGB amendments. And then, we do have a few applications that go to the Historic Landmarks Committee. We have in our Chapter 17 a table, and it was provided in your staff report, which describes which applications go through which review process. So, if you recall, we have to, by state law, just let people know exactly what the procedures are and how we're reviewing land use applications. And if you go through this, the first two on this slide are the Planning Director's Decision, one without notification and one with notification. If you look at it, it's fairly, you know, the ones that don't have notification are really permits, for the most part, in terms of perhaps what other communities would consider business licensing on some of these. And then, the ones with notification are those that are a little less impactful and more objective in terms of the criteria in which we're reviewing them. Then, when we go into the applications that are reviewed at a public hearing process with the Planning Commission, they become a little bit more complex, those types of land use applications. They're a little bit more impactful in terms of the development project. And then, if you look at what the city council, the applications that go to city council as part of a public hearing, there's only two different types. One is an appeal of the Planning Commission decision. So, if you recall, a couple of years ago, the Planning Commission denied the Baker Creek Plan Development Amendment. They appealed it, and it came to you as city council in a public hearing process. We started again. That was the next evidentiary hearing for that particular project, because they were now in an appeal process. And then, you also can initiate hearings on your own, much like what you did with the Oak Ridge Meadows project that came to you. So, there are several different types of applications that go to the Planning Commission where they don't render the decision. They're making a recommendation to you as city council after hosting a public hearing, and this is important because this is part of the process. Those types of applications are typically considered type 3 applications. So, it comprehends a plan, map, or text amendment, a plan development, a plan development amendment, a legislative amendment, and a zone change. So, these are large and impactful decisions for the community as a whole. So, in the code, the way it's described is, these will come to you as a recommendation from the Planning Commission. They will make a decision to recommend a land use decision to the McMinnville City Council. They provide their findings in which they do that, and they've hosted a public hearing at the Planning Commission level to come up with those findings and that determination. You then have the choice to say, based on what the Planning Commission has provided to us, and the whole public record comes to you, you've gotten those, you know, thick binders with that. Based on what the Planning Commission's recommendation is and the findings that they've recommended to you, you can move forward with the decision in ordinance form, or you can decide to call for a public hearing on the proposal. But the calling for a public hearing is subject to our notice requirement. So, back to that state law that says, if you're going to have a public hearing, you have to notice it in a certain way. There's a timeframe associated with that. We have to do it at a minimum of 20 days in advance of the public hearing, no more than 30 days. The intent is, you want to make sure people have the opportunity to know that the public hearing is occurring, and they can participate. The reasons right now for city council public hearing after you've received a Planning Commission recommendation is that you, as the judicial body, so again, acting as the judge, you think, you've decided you need more evidence to put into the public record for the decision-making process. So, you've read the big binder of public testimony, application materials, and staff reports, and you've decided that there's more evidence out there that you need to make an informed decision, or you do not agree with the Planning Commission findings for their decision. So, either you don't support the decision, and you have findings for a basis to change the recommendation, so Planning Commission's recommended approval, you think it should be denied, you have reasons for why you think that, and you would like to put that on the record, and then provide an opportunity for a public hearing, or you want to amend the findings that the Planning Commission has submitted to you as a recommendation. The decision for that public hearing is based entirely upon your role as a judge in this process and not as a policymaker. So, it really is evidentiary. Is there enough evidence to make the decision? Do you agree with the evidence that was presented and the findings associated with the Planning Commission's recommendation? If there is a change to the Planning Commission recommendation and their findings, then the new public hearing allows for both the applicant and the public to testify relative to that new discussion. So, it's been changed in terms of what's come out of the Planning Commission for you as the decision-making body. So, this opens it up again for the public to be able to testify and provide information as well as the applicant, so you can move forward with your decision-making process. So, it creates that fair and transparency process for the community as a whole. Currently, the way it's set up in McMinnville, it's not set up as a de facto public hearing with the city council. It's not set up as a de facto second opportunity for public testimony on the same application and the same public record and evidence that the Planning Commission deliberated on. It's really intended to be, there's something new to bring to bear at the city council level when it's going into a public hearing process. And if I'm representing that incorrectly, council, let me know. Now, that's the current situation. In Oregon, public engagement's really important, and sensing some of the public hearings that we've gone through recently, I sense that that's maybe a driver in some of the requests to do public hearings at the city council level. So, in Oregon, citizen involvement is critical to the process. It is one of our land use goals. However, the citizen involvement for quasi judicial land use decisions is a little bit different than it is for legislative discussions. It's not to weigh in on whether or not it is a good development or a bad development proposal, but whether or not the development proposal actually meets the comprehensive plan and local land use criteria. I can't tell you how many times I've had someone come to me who's testifying relative to a project, and they're just frustrated because they can't figure out why, just recently this occurred, we have no opportunity to win. And it's not a win-lose game in a quasi judicial land use process. It's, does it meet the criteria? If it doesn't meet the criteria, how do we get it there? Is there a possibility to get it there? And if we can't get it there, then we deny it. But it's not a winners-losers game. And that's very difficult for some people to understand as they're going through this type of process. For citizens to participate in a public hearing process for quasi judicial, they really need to be informed. They need to understand what the project is and the criteria on which it is reviewed. And so, that's why there's so much procedural process set up in terms of providing notice relative to the development proposal. However, the citizen involvement process is a controlled process. It's controlled by state regulations and local regulations, and that is to ensure that developers are not being unduly stripped of their right to develop their property. That's why we have a state prescription for timeliness and procedures and notification, et cetera. So, it is to set up a process in which people participate, but it's not to render a property undevelopable if it's already been entitled for development. So, in McMinnville, in terms of the public opportunity for engagement that occurs here right now in the process that we have here, it's really intended to educate and inform so that people can participate fully in a public hearing process. So, we added a neighborhood meeting requirement. We added that about two years ago, after we saw a lot of people coming to the Planning Commission public hearings who didn't even know what the project was about. And so, we thought, "Let's do something in advance of the land use process, in advance of this 120-day clock, and require a neighborhood meeting." That's when the developers meet with the neighborhood, they provide notice that they're setting up a meeting and what the agenda is, and they share their project proposal so that people can ask questions, the developer can hear from them. It's meant to, it's intended to be a, you know, more informal engagement to really start information sharing. Not sure yet if it's working in that manner here in McMinnville or not. We're hearing many different things, but it is a tool to help in terms of the public engagement and information. We then also send out a property owner notice of the public hearing. We send that out between 20 and 30 days in advance of the public hearing, and that will put in, the public notice says in it what the project is, where it's located, a general description of the impact of the project, the criteria under which it's being reviewed, and how people can access more information. Once we get a land use application in the door, we will set it up on our website immediately and start putting all new information on the website relative to that project as we get it. We also then do a newspaper public notice. This is a fairly archaic procedure that's been in our state law for a long time. I'm not sure how effective it is these days, but we have to provide it, and that's to give a general community notice that this is going on. We do like to also try to get the word out through other means as well, because we don't know how many people are reading the public notice portion of the newspaper for these types of things. We start accepting written testimony as soon as we send notice out. So, as soon as we send the...
I'm sorry, what do you mean by other means? Like, what do you mean by other means?
So, we do, we have to make sure it's transparent and fair. So, we do, what we try to do is put it on our website, and we're getting people into the habit of going there to see when there's public hearings and what the project proposal is. We're also using our McMinnville matters to let people know of upcoming meetings and whether there's, you know, what the agenda for those upcoming meetings are. We can't advocate one way or not, so it has to be fairly, merely just information getting out the door in a broad perspective. So, we can't pick and choose who we're trying to distribute it to.
Right. And so, then, with the McMinnville matters, it also gets out into social media channels?
Yeah. Thank you. And from what I understand, right now, that hasn't been challenged in case law in terms of proper notice or not. So, there's a lot of communities using it.
But you say the newspaper public notice is state law. That's the primary way of getting out. And to be transparent, we're trying to define some alternative ways.
Yeah. And if it's a big project, so we've had some big ones come in that we know there's been a lot of interest in, the Baker Creek Plan Development was one, the Oak Ridge Meadows, it became fairly clear to us with Oak Ridge Meadows right after the neighborhood meeting that that was going to be a big one. We then draw a bigger circle for our property owner notice. Our standards are minimum standard, that's why we interpret them, and we send out more property owner notices to a bigger circle if we feel it warrants it. We start accepting written testimony as soon as the property owner notice goes out, and we'll post those as we receive them. And then, as soon as we're in a public hearing process, we're sending that written testimony to the decision-making body on a regular basis. So, you've seen that at your level of city council, Planning Commission. If we're in a fairly, we're getting a lot of testimony about a project, we will send them emails nightly with the new testimony and post it nightly as well, all up until the day of the public hearing. There are a lot of communities that won't do that. They will shut down when they will receive the written testimony and just bring it to the public hearing and enter it into the record. Entering something into the record at the public hearing itself is fairly chaotic. You've seen how, you know, what's going on, the dynamics in the room, how many people want to testify. We want to make sure that the opportunity for the information sharing occurs. So, that's why we're trying to get it to people as quickly as possible, and we're posting it on our website. If there are known opponents who have been participating in the process, we will also let them know when we've gotten in a new record and posted it to our website as well. And then, there's the opportunity to testify at the public hearing. We've started creating brochures on how to testify at a public hearing so that people feel more comfortable about it, and we leave those up at the front, and also send it out with our property owner notice. So, we're doing everything we can to sort of set the stage so that people can testify in a meaningful way. And then, by state law, at your first evidentiary hearing, so currently, that's at the Planning Commission or Historic Landmarks Committee. If I've participated in some way, written testimony, public testimony, we ask the audience, "Does anyone want to keep the record open?" So, let's say the public hearings occurred, and Planning Commission will stay until the last person testifies. So, they don't cut it off, they'll stay until the end. And then, once all the people there have testified, and the opponent, the applicant has had their opportunity to rebut the testimony, we then ask the question, "Does anyone want to keep the record open?" If the Planning Commission has decided, perhaps they're not going to continue with another public hearing, there's still an opportunity to keep the record open to submit additional written testimony at a minimum of seven days. And then, the applicant has the opportunity to rebut that in another seven days, and then the record is closed.
Heather, can I ask a couple of quick questions? It's with regards to your comment about educating people about how they can testify. I know that we've, we need to listen to only certain criteria with regards to it. How have you, have you had success helping people to understand that? Like, I shouldn't say that. They want to be addressing something that's meaningful from what we're looking at, but it's a lot to understand. And I know it's written in the, you know, the docket, but what have you found that works well for them to understand what testimony we can consider versus what we can't?
Yeah. So, has it worked well? I don't know. But I will tell you what we've strived to do. So, we also changed our citizen involvement chapter of our comp plan a couple of years ago and added a new policy, which was to make sure that the information we're sharing is shared in such a way that people can understand it. And so, we make ourselves available. So, for instance, with the recent Oak Ridge Meadows project that went through, we met with the neighbors on many different occasions as staff. From, I think, a week after the neighborhood meeting, we had a meeting with them so that they could understand a little bit better what would be the upcoming process when this comes in, on their request. They asked for the meeting, we said, "Sure." We don't have a land use application yet, so we can't talk about that, but we can talk about process. And so, they came in, and we did a presentation and answered their questions about, "This is what the process will be like. This is for you to participate in a meaningful way. You need to understand the decision-making bodies looking at this, this, and this." And then, throughout the process, we were answering their questions to ensure that they were understanding these were sort of how these, how things were being reviewed. And so, as the testimony continued, we started to see them referencing different types of the code and the criteria and the comp plan policies, understanding that that's where it needed to be. It started off very emotional, and then it got there. Do all of them get there? I don't know. It depends on, you know, how much interaction we have with people who want to testify, I guess. But we're always willing to have that discussion about process.
Do you also include that kind of information in, or like summary information in the public notice?
Well, we, in terms of what is the...
Breaking it down, the way you were just describing, kind of breaking it down for, you know, this is the criteria, or more of a dry read?
It's a dry, it's very dry. It's great, David. It's great legalese. People love to read it.
People might not get to that part of the...
It's government discussion. It's prescribed by state law how we need to notice, the property owner notice for the land use hearing. We do say in there, we have, we have to have certain language in there. We do say in there, you know, "If you want to participate, this is the criteria in which to look at. We have more information in the Community Development Center if you want to come and visit with us about it." We are, and then we have that brochure about how to testify at public hearings that we send out with the notice, too. There might be other ways for us to do it. We can look at that.
I was just curious. Yeah. I have a second question. We have gotten feedback, especially for those hearings that go long, about, you just mentioned that the Planning Commission stays until the last person testifies. We've gotten feedback from some citizens that that's really not fair because people need to go home. Have you, I mean, do you know how other, so it brings up the question about whether or not going until the last person testifies versus, at a certain point, you say, you know, some people might have gone home because they didn't have a chance to testify, and you extend the hearing. Have you heard any talk about whether, which one of those seems to create more public involvement?
So, if we think it's, there's going to be a lot of testimony, we will, at the beginning of the meeting, the chair does this. He will let people know that the recommendation is to continue the public hearing on the basis that we expect there to be a lot of public testimony. So, we say that right at the beginning. What's happening, though, is we have this clock that's sitting over here ticking that we need to be able to respond to, and our Planning Commission meets once a month. And so, you know, when we are in that process of saying we expect that this will be a continued public hearing, we probably have already had a discussion with the applicant, asking them to see, we call it tolling the clock, "Will you give us some extra time so we can get through this at the Planning Commission level and that people feel like they can testify?"
Oh, great. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. The Planning Commission is committed to staying to the end, though. And I will say here in McMinnville, I know there's a lot of, and perhaps historically, there haven't been long meetings, because there's always seems to be a lot of rhetoric about it, but in my experience, it's, they're not very long here for the most part. There's a few anomalies, but...
And we talk about those anomalies a lot.
But I've been in meetings till 2:00 in the morning in a, you know, chamber. The city of Ben is, that's a norm for them. I mean, it's just, it's the way to get through it and listen to everybody and give them time to participate and still maintain the clock established by state law.
Have I been to different meetings? I mean, not Planning Commission meetings. We stay here late a lot.
Well, for public...
Not as much anymore, now that we're through some stuff.
But the other question I have that goes right along with Wendy is, do you get any feedback that by putting a time limit, like a three-minute time limit on individuals, that that curtails them from really fully discussing what they want to, or do you think that that really helps them focus and be, do a much better job at communicating in that shorter period of time?
I think it depends on the individual testifying. So, again, if we feel there's going to be a lot of interest in testifying, we will visit with the chair. It's a chair's decision of any decision-making body as to how they want to procedurally set up the public testimony. A lot of people think staff's doing that. It's really the chair's decision in terms of running the meeting. And so, we'll let the chair know that we think there's going to be a lot of interest in public testimony at this particular public hearing. Do you want to do anything? The chair of the Planning Commission now asks people to raise their hands. Are you here to testify for this particular public hearing? If he senses that there's a lot of interest, he then will put a time limit on it. If he, if he's made that decision in advance, so he made that decision in advance of the Oak Ridge Meadows public hearing, we will then let people know that we know are preparing to testify. to testify, that there has been this three-minute limit set up for them.
And I, yeah, and I was very pleased with, we knew we were going to have a lot at the city council public hearing and we let them know early in advance that they needed to prepare themselves for three minutes. And I thought we did a very good job of communicating that and setting that expectation.
Yeah. I think what's hard is what I've seen happen in McMinnville is, there's a lot of emotional testimony and so, and, and that's just the nature of what's going on. People are impacted by the proposal. And so rather than getting into the criteria right away, there, I've seen some people get frustrated because they're, they're in the emotional piece and they haven't even gotten to the criteria piece. I've seen other people who come in who are clearly comfortable with the process and just immediately start talking about the criteria. So I think it is individual to the testifier.
But they still have the opportunity to submit their testimony in writing too?
They have their opportunity to submit their testimony in writing. We typically will tell people because we, we do have, I'm not sure, with this last time around, it was really hard on staff because we got a lot of testimony daily and trying to get that recorded on the record, printed off and delivered to everyone in a timely manner was tough, all the way up until the public hearing night. So, you know, I'm not sure if that's going to be a practice moving forward, all the way up to the public hearing night. We'll have to think of something that makes sense and works for everyone. But we do tell people, written testimony is delivered to the decision-making body. They have the opportunity to review it in advance of the public hearing. Strategically, it's a great idea.
That's bad reality.
What's that?
I was taking the words out of Zach's mouth.
What's that?
Strategically, it's a good idea.
Yeah, well, I mean, if that's, sometimes, so, oh, you can't see this. Isn't that great? These are pictures just to show you that our Planning Commission public hearings are either like tonight where we have one or two people, or it's full. I mean, that's, that's essentially where it lands. If it's a residential development, it will be full because it's impacting other people who live nearby. And if it's something that's fairly easy and not very impactful to neighboring properties, there's one or two people there. But it's, there is, there is engagement happening at the Planning Commission level. So that's working here in McMinnville. That's not always the case for communities, but it's, there's definitely engagement occurring. And then you have a nine-member Planning Commission and they typically are always there, all nine members. And they're thoughtful and they take their jobs seriously and are reading all the materials in advance. It's a good working Planning Commission right now. So if you want to move towards a different system, there's a couple of ways that other communities do this. Many communities do it the same way that it's prescribed here in McMinnville, which is that the public hearing process, the bulk of it lays at the Planning Commission level or the Historic Landmarks Committee and that the city council is an appeal process for a public hearing. But some, some communities, it's a de facto public hearing at city council for certain types of land use applications. So if a land use application is coming in, you have a public hearing at Planning Commission, you have another public hearing at city council and that's the process as described. To be able to do that, you have to really make a commitment to stay and, and for the duration of the evening because you're not having a lot of public hearings at each decision-making body process because we still have that 120-day clock in front of us. So for instance, in Redmond, it was a de facto public hearing at city council for certain land use decisions. But we had one public hearing at the Planning Commission level. They went through all the testimony that evening until it was done and then, and then it went up to city council and the same thing happened there. And what that does is it speeds up the process at the Planning Commission. So right now, it's a fairly deliberative process at the Planning Commission. They're listening, they're taking the time, they're continuing hearings when they need to continue hearings. And this would sort of compress that a little bit because we still have to stay within that 120-day clock. If you did want to move in that direction, our recommendation would be do it similar to how it's described now, which is those things that are coming to you from the Planning Commission as a recommendation that you're the final decision-making body for. And those are those larger impactful land use decisions. So the comprehensive plan map or tax amendment, a plan development, plan development amendment, legislative amendment, and zone change. And I will tell you, as we're working through the growth analysis, we're going to recommend instituting a master planning process as well. That will be at this level and we'd come to you too, in terms of a public hearing process. Or other communities have done this, they've shifted to a hearings officer model. The benefit of a hearings officer model is it's 100% factually based. So you've removed sort of the emotional piece of it, the relationships, the political influencers, the, you know, I really, this person is a leader in our community and very influential and, you know, they're, what they're testifying about is carrying more weight in my mind than what this other person's testifying about. And that's not sort of the fair transparency judgment role that you have as judges in this. And it removes all of that. And it just puts it at a hearings officer and that, it sits there in a non-emotional state and it's just very factually based. City of Eugene does this. Susan and I have talked about that when she was down there as the planning director. They moved to a hearings officer model. And then all your public testimony that's provided, it is criteria-based because the hearings officer has no interest in anything else. So it's fairly clear very quickly that it's all right there in the criteria and if you're not in the criteria, you're not making any impact at all on the decision-maker.
Is that a contract position where you bring an individual in that's knowledgeable on land use and-
Yep.
What kind of, what kind of cost would that run?
I don't know. I've never operated under that model, do you know?
The Midwayland Valley Council of Governments just hired an attorney to serve as an interim city attorney and a hearings official. And one contract is $157 an hour and the other one's $175 an hour. And I just can't remember off the top of my head which one is city attorney and which one's hearings official. That's probably, that's probably about what we paid. We had a hearings official at Lane County, we contracted with the Council of Governments and I think it was probably between $115, $200 an hour.
And what we would probably do, so, you know, their hourly, their billable hourly rate is prep, reading the materials, conducting the hearing and rendering decision and writing the findings. We would probably go through a same model that we went through for the planning fees, which was what's sort of the standard amount of time that you put into these things and coming up with a fee and then having some sort of additional, if it goes, if it goes further than that. So for instance, the Oak Ridge Meadows one, if there's a lot more billable hours put into that, that there's an ability to capture that.
Just let me add one more thing. I, I don't know that there are no jurisdictions who hire hearings officials as staff person, but I know that even Metro contracts for hearings official services. So I think the typical model is to contract with a private firm or some sort of public entity to provide those services as a position and not use employees to do it.
One last question I would have on a hearings officer model. Would that cut down on the work that the planning department has to put in, in the whole process? Because you're providing information, but the hearings officer collects it and we don't have to make a, you don't have to make that presentation and gather that-
No, so we're still doing all of that.
So you'd still-
They're just you.
Okay.
Or the Planning Commission. You know, I don't know, I'd have to call other planning departments that have experienced both models and see if there's a difference because it could be, the, I would imagine most communities go to a hearings officer model and don't hire internally because you are really trying to create that arms-length decision-making body. So you're no longer in sort of a political, emotional state of decision-making. And so I would imagine that once it shifts over there and is there for a while and you were really just in the facts at that point in time, that may decrease the amount of time that we spend with people.
So this model would completely take the city council out of the picture and the Planning Commission?
You would probably still be an appeal.
Well, we would be the appeal then, okay.
Depending on the type of land use. I need to learn more about it because it isn't a model that I've worked in.
I, I don't know that they're necessarily, I don't know that the city council would necessarily have to be-
The appeal body?
In the role of the appeal body, I think.
Go right up to Luba.
Directly from hearings officer to Luba, but that's based on how, how it's set up by the local jurisdiction.
And I have a question about, so the hearings officer has a, a public hearing the same way a Planning Commission would?
Because there, because remember, state law, you as a city council have to authorize someone to serve as a hearings officer or hearings body because we have to have a public hearing for certain land use applications.
So are they just more disciplined about saying with, so how is the emotion taken out of it just because it's a different entity? Like-
They don't have the relationships, right?
They're just more disciplined about saying, we can't hear that.
Right.
Yeah, I, I would relate it as the difference between testifying in front of a judge in a courtroom versus testifying before legislative assembly. The decorum in a courtroom is typically much more constrained, confined to the procedures that are at play and the facts that are in front of them and, and the appeal to emotion just isn't, it's not the same as when you're testifying to elected officials.
Yeah, okay. Some people struggle with that, it's a loss of local control, but the, if you think about the basis of quasi-judicial is there is no discretionary local control. That's already been established through the legislative process, which is where the discretionary local control happens, to create the code. In terms of fiscal impact, if we're still in a full cost recovery model, which is what we're still working towards based on your direction, second public hearing, so this is, this is under the premise that it's a de facto second public hearing at city council level, that could add costs to the land use application fee schedule. And currently, we estimate a public hearing, per public hearing, a different decision-making body is about $1,750 and that's at our 55% cost recovery level. So we would go through the same process and review it for, if we had a public hearing at city council for every time there's that type of land use decision. Right now, the fee schedule does account for that there will be times when the city council wants to have a public hearing, but when we did the modeling, we did it based on what the historical trend was, which wasn't a lot. And so, you know, we plugged it in that it occurs once every whatever, I forgot what the data was, but however many times it had occurred historically here. So that's the, sort of my setting the stage for your discussion of what the public hearing policies are for quasi-judicial land use decisions relative to state law, current local regulations, and other paths to consider. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Heather. Any questions for Heather? Zach?
I have three. You touched on it a little bit at the end, but, so mainly a framework of slide two, you know, quasi-judicial, slide two. You, you talk about it's quasi, quasi-judicial. Is my understanding of the judicial, full judicial process is the judicial discretion? So how does that come into our ability in quasi-judicial? Do we get quasi-judicial discretion? Or, I mean, maybe that's a bigger discussion that doesn't have an answer, but-
What do you mean by, what do you mean by judicial discretion?
Well, right, the-
Deciding which laws apply and don't apply?
Like, well, like judge has power to make decisions based on fairness, weighing what's in front of him. There's that, you know, is, am I wrong? And there's a precedent of judicial discretion to make, am I way out of line?
So, well, sorry. So judges weigh facts, quasi-judicial hearings bodies weigh facts. So you'll, you'll get testimony from, just like juries do, okay? So juries are sitting in that role as well. The jury, you know, in a sense, you're sitting up here as a jury, if that is more comfortable to you than, than sitting up here as judges. You've got law that you have to apply, you have testimony coming in that gives you the evidence, what are the facts of the situation, you know, as they're testified to. Two people may give you completely different set of facts. You've got some discretion to decide who's telling the truth.
Okay.
Who's, who's giving you the greater weight of evidence. So somebody who's got, you know, take a hydrology model. Somebody's got a hydrology model, you know, mapped out on the back of a napkin versus somebody who's, you know, got a hydrology model that shows you all the testing that went into it and all of the data that went into it and their credentials behind it. You're going to take those two pieces of testimony, if they're in conflict, and you're going to decide as a judge which one is more substantial evidence in, in weighing which way it's going to go. So I don't know if I would necessarily call that discretion in that you don't have discretion in deciding, well, I'm not going to apply this law today to you, but I am going to apply it tomorrow to somebody else. That, that, there's not that kind of discretion.
So there, there's state law that actually, so, and we provide it to you, 227.173. It's fairly specific that for land use decisions, it really has to be based on evidence and facts. And there's four different tests under that law as to what, what are the evidence and facts that a decision is being made. And that's what is used in an appeal process. Does the decision-making body operate under the test?
Zach, you had three questions. Was that one or three?
Yeah, and that was one. On slide two, you also write, well, I guess, this, my second question dovetailed into my first question, which was defining discretionary in community dialogue with significant input and opportunity for discretionary decision-making. I think that suffices.
That's the legislative side.
And then one thing that came up in our previous process was a back and forth between David and Sal about criteria, or no, about a number quantity defining a number, right? 99 good, is 100 good, is 101 good, or going backwards, which one's bad? So you guys often will highlight, here's the criteria that you've interpreted this as satisfying. I pull up and, pull up the whole playbook of the criteria. There, the number you highlight is dwarfed by the full amount of criteria. And I understand there's a bunch that are commercial related or commercial specific and it's a residential product, we can throw out all the commercial ones. But is there a magic number of 51% of the criteria have to be met or 50% of the criteria have to be met? Is there, is there a magic number of criteria that have to be checked?
So if-
So I want to address this because on that particular issue where we talked about transportation impacts, as you read through the entire context of the comprehensive plan, it specifically says you will rely on this plan that's adopted when interpreting traffic impacts.
Yeah.
And so that's why staff refer to that particular document. Now, if you want to change that document, adopt a different document, fine, that's a legislative process. But once it's been adopted, that sets the goalposts.
Okay.
And in the judicial process, you don't get to start legislating. You have to apply the criteria that you've adopted that apply to everybody that's coming in the door.
Understood on that point.
To answer your, the other part of your question, it's 100% of the criteria. I think what's dangerous is when you pull comp plan policies out of context. So the comp plan policies are establishing the policy under which the development code should be establishing the, the standards to meet that policy.
Can you say that again? Sorry.
So comp plan policies are establishing policies for the city. The code itself, the McMinnville municipal code, should be establishing the standards under which you meet that policy. So you can't just pull a comp plan policy out by itself, sit it over here and then subjectively interpret some of the language in there to say, this is where I'm going to go with my finding. If you have development code language over here that says the opposite of that. And so that's, we look at all the policies, all criteria, and we actually look at all the state administrative rules when we're, when we're working through a process, but they all work with each other. And so it's supposed to be 100% the criteria. If you feel that there's comp plan policies or criteria that are not being addressed in the findings document, that goes back to that decision-making process of when it comes to you as a recommendation from the Planning Commission with, these are the criteria in which it was reviewed, here's the findings relative to that criteria, you can say, I don't think all the criteria were applied in this project appropriately. I would like to look at this criteria, blah, 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 blah. So let's say we brought it to you as an ordinance as the first action without a public hearing yet under our current process. I think we need to look at this criteria as well. I would like to find, I would like you to go back and develop findings for this criteria based on these types of whatever you feel is the basis for it. And then we, then you would say, and I, we would, I would like to see us schedule a public hearing so that we can discuss that criteria. And then what that does is it's introducing new evidence into the public record and it gives- it gives the applicant and the public the opportunity to testify on that new evidence at the public hearing level. That's one of the reasons I think the process here in McMinnville set up the way it is to call for that public hearing at the city council level, is if you feel the findings document and the decision recommended from the Planning Commission is either wrong or not comprehensive enough or something like that. But at that first meeting, when it's brought to you as a decision-making body, you can on the record say, "I would like to see us explore this, this, and this, and I would like to see us have a public hearing so that that can be entered into the record and the public has the opportunity to testify about it."
Does that answer?
Yeah, it may have spawned more, but that's...
Right, okay, that's good. Okay, Sal?
Yeah, I just had some questions. Thank you, Zach, for bringing the second question, the first question you brought up. So let's take the Oak Ridge subdivision example. So in that case, we had the initial request to have a hearing when the matter first came before us, and I raised concerns, as did others on the council, about the traffic impacts on the neighborhood as well as other issues. And then, when we had the public hearing, I repeated concerns in light of the materials that we got, that the change in street categorization from neighborhood residential to residential connector was a significant change in the neighborhood, or I felt that it was an objective change. And similarly, I felt that the way that the traffic analysis was given led me to be a little skeptical about it, just because of how the breakdowns happened. So those strike me as an objective criteria, objective set of criteria to reject an application. And yet, the feedback in the meeting from staff was very strenuously that that was not a set of objective criteria, and particularly City Attorney Kosch. So I had a couple of questions about that. First, why is that not an objective criteria? And then, second, Attorney Kosch, you know, multiple times said that anything we do as a board would be precedent-setting going forward. And yet, I'm aware of legal decisions that are handed down by courts all the time that are not necessarily precedent-setting, even if they don't necessarily comport with what a previous court might have done in the same circumstance. So I guess I'm questioning, number one, is it in fact the case that every time we make a decision that that sets a new precedent if it's at odds with the previous one? And second, to what extent are traffic impacts, for example, not objective criteria? And if that's not an objective criteria, what would be?
So can I start for a minute on the part of it? So in regards to your question of what's the objective criteria, so the, what I heard, just so you can understand how I was thinking through it at that time, the city has an adopted transportation system plan. The transportation system plan has standards in it. The standards all have findings associated with them. So when the city put that transportation system plan together, it adopted a series of findings that says, "This is why we landed here," the 1,200 ADT for local residential streets. To say that that 1,200 ADT is too high, and I want it to be less, then there needs to be some sort of findings associated with that. The residential connector in the transportation system plan, a residential connector is still carrying that level of traffic. However, there's the opportunity, and this is what Mike was trying to explain, there's the opportunity for the neighborhood to say, "We think that there's too much traffic being carried on this, it's creating unsafe situation. Can you come in with mitigating design?" So that's where you would come in with speed bombs and things like that to mitigate the traffic. And that's not a land use process, that's over here in a secondary process, that's in the TSP, and that's how it's described in there. So it's not a threshold for criteria.
But again, in this case, part of the land use criteria, as I understood it, part of our city policy is that we also need to minimize the impact on changes to neighboring residential neighborhoods. And so if that's part of the criteria, then...
But that's the perfect example of what I was trying to describe to Zach. So yes, that's the comp plan policy. The comp plan policy says mitigate impact to neighborhoods in terms of transportation. So we set up this policy. Then, we come in underneath that with the transportation system plan, and as a community say, "To mitigate impact on neighborhoods, we're going to create these standards." And these standards are very specific, 1,200 ADT for local residential streets. And so then, that's the criteria that plays with the policy.
Right.
So by pulling the policy out independently over here and saying, "We're not meeting the policy," that the land use process doesn't work that way because you have subsets underneath it that have then said, "This is how the community's going to meet that policy."
I get that, and I guess what I would push back...
Can I just interrupt for a moment? We have two minutes left, and this is a specific thing that maybe we could talk staff to specific counselors to understand it. I just want to make sure that we have an opportunity, as we have Heather in front of us, to more general on public hearings. So I hate to do that, but we really are out of time, and I just want to make sure that we're trying to accomplish those things that aren't rehashing kind of where we've been.
Okay, well, that seems fair enough, Mr. Mayor, but I don't think we have a particularly huge schedule, so I would have preferred more time to address that specific question, even if that pushed another meeting back five minutes. But I'll take it up with staff stuff.
Okay. And if we need to bring it back up, Sal, we can.
Thank you.
At a time where we'd have more time. Kelly, you had a question?
Well, I would tend to err on the side of Sal, just say, if this could be concluded within the next 10 minutes, it might be worth it to go a little bit over.
I would suggest, though, that that particular discussion of we're going to rehash a prior decision that was made and advice that was given, that it might be better informed if we all have the comprehensive plan in front of us and we can walk through the specific provisions of that comp plan, how all of those policies fit together in full context, not just cherry picking from memory what one particular comp plan policy setter didn't say. It's a conversation that I believe Sal is worth having, absolutely. I'm just not sure that this is the most productive form for us to have it in. And if it is, I think we all ought to have copies of the comprehensive plan in front of us to go through it.
Yeah, maybe the thing to do, we did this with the Planning Commission. So there was no appeal on the land use decision. So there's an opportunity now to sort of do a debrief and work through any questions associated with it as sort of a learning process for moving forward. We can do a work session relative to that, that sort of talks through different things that came up and how to work through those.
I think that would be a wise decision to have the comp plan in front of us. I think we need to have a little bit of a discussion around, you know, were there any learnings from this process that we need to take a look at from a policy perspective so that we can be ahead of the game instead of behind the game?
Yeah, and as staff, I would ask that you as the council, so we've gotten lots of individual communications from counselors requesting different things relative to what occurred through that process. For staff to put together a work session for you, it would be better for us in terms of our time and resources to do it for what you want to see as a body. But tonight, we, what we had heard was that on a policy level for process of public hearings at the city council level, that there was a request to have a discussion of, do we want de facto public hearings for certain land use decisions? So that we can, one, amend the codes, we'll have to amend the codes to allow that to occur, and two, it helps us manage that 120-day clock. We'll set up a system at the Planning Commission level and the city council level to manage the 120-day clock, if that is of interest.
So I have two thoughts here. One is this idea of shifting to a hearings officer model, I'll be really frank, that it makes me very uncomfortable. It's not that I'm not willing to learn about it, but not necessarily learn about it in the sense of this is the direction council wants to take, and so now we're moving in this direction. I always, I mean, this is such a small amount of information, it's not enough to form a real opinion about, but it does create some discomfort for me off the bat with the very limited information. And then the other thought that I, or the other question that I have is you just said that there was a request towards investigating, moving towards a different system in this de facto public hearing. So where did that request come from?
It came out of one of your city council meetings when you were at the dais. Did I just forget? Not on point tonight, what can I say?
Might not have been at the meeting.
Failed.
Yeah, you might not have been at the meeting.
Oh, okay.
So that request came, which was led, was going to lead to my question was, I think I was the one that made that request, but it was more out of, it seems like we would get to these public hearings, and then if we don't take an action that night, we're out of time on the clock. So if we go to this de facto public hearing, it sounds like we're still going to be out of time on the clock because it's still 120 days.
You'll have eliminated that first meeting where you've considered the Planning Commission recommendation and findings.
So we could theoretically listen to the public hearing and then set our decision over, so we're not making a decision at 1:00 AM, even though we've listened to all the testimony.
No, you will probably still be making a decision at 1:00 AM, and it may be longer, because if you recall, you got the staff report on the project at that first meeting.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
It makes, because of the compressed timeframe by state law, and it is the applicant's decision of whether or not they want to extend that timeframe. It's not a city decision. We can't say to the applicant, "We need to extend the timeframe." It's there to protect them so that the process doesn't delay their project, because their project's meant to just be reviewed against the criteria. So what it does do is it creates longer meetings.
Yeah.
So we can get through it.
Jeff just informed me that we do have open work sessions in October and November, that we could bring this back and have further discussion.
Yeah.
So, and I think, you know, there's enough discussion around it. I think tonight gave us a great framework, the quasi judicial process. And I think that was very important because we all come from different backgrounds, you know. We've got half that have been on, this half has been on the Planning Commission, and we haven't over here. And it's always good to be brought up to speed, because we many times go long periods of time in between these really tough decisions that we're making. It could, in my recollection, it could be once every three years that have a big one like what we went through. So I would...
Planning Commission's having them on a regular basis, so if they do come up to you, that will change.
Can I just add one comment? Actually, piggybacking on what Heather said, I'm like, I also, like Remy, have some concerns about both of those. The first concern about de facto public hearings at the city council level is that we've put a lot of energy into forming a really competent planning commission, and they do a really, really good job. And the number of hearings that I think we would really want to see again and redo that open public hearing process is small compared to the one, the number that they have that would de facto come up to us. So I'd be concerned about redundancy, that we would have, we have a lot of people here, and we have a lot of people on the Planning Commission, we'd have a lot of people in the audience that would be spending a lot of extra time. So I am uncomfortable with that, de facto, because I think you'd be surprised at the number of ones that you'd say, "We really don't need to do this."
Yeah.
So that's one concern that I have. And then, I think the hearings officer, my concern with that is, I feel like there is an element of the citizens being heard that would be affected by that. I mean, I know that we can always have to work on that balance between educating about what we can and can't listen to, but then there's also the relationship of the citizens feeling like they have a voice. And I think that that is impacted by that hearings officer, like, model. So those are my two thoughts on that before we move on.
Citizens can still testify and will at the hearings officer. It's a very different environment for the person sitting here to testify to a hearings officer versus a body of people they know.
Well, but I think that, I almost said something earlier, but a hearings officer, I mean, so you're talking about another employee of the city in McMinnville at that point, no?
No, it's a contract. It's typically, I don't know, I don't know of anybody who employs a hearings officer. It's typically contracted, from what I understand. Again, I haven't worked in this model before, and if you wanted to go into an in-depth discussion, I would suggest give us time to put some research into that and bring it back to you. But from my understanding of it, it's typically contracted, and that's deliberate for the arm's length.
So in, looking at the time again, I think we ought to schedule another work session to now take our learnings tonight and take it into a discussion mode and have more input and more time to come prepared. And I think it'd be a great work session scheduled for October, November.
Okay, and it's an opportunity to provide staff some direction on what you'd like to talk further about that we can provide you information on, or...
And I would suggest that the council, if you have some specific direction that you'd like to go, an email to Jeff, and then Jeff can inform the planning department what to prepare for.
Perfect.
Okay? Heather, thank you, as usual, your completeness, and I just love your slides because it really zeros in. You know, your handouts, your report was very detailed, and this really kind of zeroed down and got us to where we needed to be. Lot of discussion tonight, good information, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I'm going to go ahead and close our work session. Does anybody need a few minutes? Okay, let's move in then to our scheduled regular council meeting. Again, this is the council meeting of September 10th, 2019, and I will call us to order. I will ask, Remy, could you lead us in the pledge?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the time, this evening, where we have an invitation for public comment. Again, this gives the opportunity for any of our citizens to come before the council and to speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. We typically will hold these comments to three minutes, and in order to encourage an environment of openness, courtesy, respect for differing opinions, view, please refrain from behavior that would be disruptive to the meetings, such as making loud noises, clapping, shouting, booing, or any other activity that disrupts the orderly conduct of the meeting, and abusive language will not be tolerated. Tonight, we have Mr. Mark Davis. He does none of that, so I think we're in good shape. Mark?
Control yourself. Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington Street. I'd like to make a comment about the planning hearing process, your work session. I've made this comment to Heather, but I'd like to share it with the council. I've been before the Planning Commission, both as an applicant and as an opponent. You know, I've spent a lot of time sitting in the audience, listening to people, and one of the real weaknesses I see in the process is the dealings that the applicant has in advance of the process with the planning staff. And this is not a criticism. I mean, it's what the planning staff is supposed to do. You bring in an application, and you want the application to work, you sit down with staff, okay, what are the problems, and you discuss all this stuff. But what it appears to the public often is there's this sort of collusion between the planning staff and the applicant, because it's inevitably referenced during the hearing, "Well, we talked about that issue in this." And typically, the applicant thanks the planning staff for all their cooperation in helping them get the application to meet all the standards. And inevitably, I mean, the applicant will withdraw their application if it doesn't meet the standards. I mean, you're not going to spend tens of thousands of dollars and, you know, bring expert witnesses, et cetera. So what you've got is a case of, most of these applications come before the Planning Commission, they have recommendations for approval from staff because they meet the criteria. Staff have gone through the criteria, I mean, there's nothing wrong with any of that, but what I see is the citizens come and they go, "Well, wait a minute, you know? Here's the applicant, and the staff have been talking about this, they've all agreed." And then when I get up to speak, and I'm really upset because there's more traffic in my neighborhood, or whatever I'm upset about, they cut the trees down, and the, you know, that they don't get heard, they're told, "Well, that's not appropriate." And I think there's a lot of frustration about that. And I think that more of an effort should be made to explain to the public, you know, what the role of the staff is vis a vis the applicant, so that it doesn't appear to be collusion. what the role of the staff is vis a vis the applicant so that it doesn't appear to be collusion. And I know that's a loaded word, but I mean, I think there's a heck of a lot of people sitting out in the in the audience who really feel like, you know, it's a done deal before they get there and they are extremely frustrated. They don't feel the process is fair and, you know, it's not an easy, you know, I don't see there's an easy solution. Like I say, I don't think anything wrong is going on, but I think there's a perception that there is something wrong going on. And somehow we need to try to at least break down some of that perception. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Good insights there. And I think, you know, something that we can look into, a statement that might share, you know, it's a process that's been going through and we have a point in time and it looks a little off sided sometimes. So I appreciate it, Mark. Any other comments from the audience? Okay, this takes us to our presentation tonight on House Bill 2001. And we'll call on Heather to present this House bill to us. And we have slides on the screen and counselors, that's been sent to you also. Welcome again.
Yeah, we would have all had the night off if my department hadn't submitted anything tonight. Don't blame me, Jeeves. So anyways, we did want to be able to come to you and visit about House Bill 2001 because it is impactful to the city. We have some big decisions in front of us and some big lifts that are coming out of this House bill. This presentation's a little longer than your normal 10-minute presentation because the agenda is fairly light. And I wanted to make sure that we could talk through what those mandates are. So I'm taking advantage of that opportunity. So I apologize in advance, but.
Our agenda says we start executive session at 7:30.
What's that?
I said, our agenda says we start executive session at 7:30.
Yeah, I saw that.
I know, it's never been in there before, but.
We're well ahead of schedule right now, right?
15 minutes, excellent.
Let's just breeze through this one.
I'll stop at 7:30.
No, it's a seven o'clock regular and 7:30 exact.
Yeah.
It's a $600,000, $700,000 lift, but we can breeze through that really quickly if you want to. Anyway, so House Bill 2001, this is a House bill that came out of the last legislative session. It made the media quite a bit. It was the Speaker's bill and it's often referred to as the missing middle housing bill. But it is a bill that has state mandates for cities, especially cities over 25,000 in population. And the compliance is required for these mandates by June 30, 2022. That seems like that's a significant amount of time to get the work done. But I'll walk you through what the work is and it's fairly significant. We did, I will let you know, I, as the planning director for the city, did participate in some discussions with Speaker Kotex's team when the bill first came out to share my concerns about the bill and how cities would be able to perform to it. One of the things I did ask is that the timeframe be pushed out originally, I think it was 2020. And for some of the things we need to do, I was like, no city's going to be able to perform to that except for maybe Metro who has the resources. So some of the things we did participate in and the bill reflects that, so. And then I also wanted to walk through what compliance means. So what do we have to do as a city of McMinnville by June 30th, 2022? So to understand the bill, you first need to understand what is missing middle housing. And it's really sort of the products between single-family dwelling units and apartment complexes, more or less. It's, a lot of people will describe it as duplexes and triplexes and fourplexes and townhomes. With recent developments, you know, you now have cottage clusters and tiny homes in there. There's all sorts of different ways to look at missing middle housing. But it's to get us from just single family to the apartment complexes, something in between to provide more units, presumably more affordable units because you're providing more units and more choice for communities. So the mandates of the bill itself is that all cities with a population of 25,000 or more, and so McMinnville falls into that, need to adopt regulations that allow duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters and townhouses in all zones that allow detached, single-family dwelling units by June 30th, 2022. Cottage clusters and townhomes are both defined in the bill. You got a copy of the bill with your staff report. Cottage cluster is four or more home units that are 900 square feet or less, I think. I can't recall. And then townhouses, we have several of those products in McMinnville, so most people are familiar with that. In McMinnville, what that means is that's all of our residential zones. Every residential zone we have allows single-family dwelling units. So all residential zones are going to need to be amended to allow all these types of products. And to let you know, most of our residential zones do not allow these types of products right now, today. That means that we are impacting a little over 4,700 acres within the city limits with this mandate. The bill's intention, to understand the bill's mandates, it's important to understand the intention. A lot of people see this as a density bill. It really was intended originally to be a bill that creates inclusive neighborhoods. There's a lot of studies that show that, you know, if you think about the way historically neighborhoods developed, there were a lot of duplexes and quadplexes and these bigger homes around the downtown in the historic neighborhoods and things like that. And then we started moving into zones where we segregated single-family detached homes from apartments. So we have areas of McMinnville where there's a bunch of apartment complexes. And then we have neighborhoods where there's a bunch of single-family dwelling units. And it started creating these sort of barriers, right, to the haves and have-nots. And there's a lot of studies that show that that type of zoning then started creating exclusive neighborhoods. And so the bill's intention is really to change that around and create inclusivity in neighborhoods, allowing everybody the opportunity to live in different places. And that's very similar to our recently adopted Great Neighborhood Principles where we said the same thing. We said that we want to start creating inclusive neighborhoods in our community. We have a comprehensive plan policy that talks about it and we adopted this before the bill was adopted. So ironically, we were working on this before the bill even came out and the language associated with the bill. But our comprehensive plan policy is that the Great Neighborhood Principles will ensure that all developed places include characteristics and elements that create a livable, egalitarian, healthy, social, inclusive, safe and vibrant neighborhood with enduring value. Whether that place is a completely new development or redevelopment or infill project with an existing built area. So we were having concurrent dialogue about this in our community and the need to do this as the bill was being crafted. We then have principles underneath that policy that talk about housing for diverse incomes and generations, that all neighborhoods should have that, including a range of housing forms and types. So very similar to the bill's mandate of open up your single-family dwelling unit zones to allow more housing types to create inclusivity. And then we also said that great neighborhoods have a variety of building forms and architectural variety to avoid monocultural design. So what does this mean? The big question is how do we support the bill with our infrastructure? In Oregon, we're limited in terms of how we plan for infrastructure. It's kind of the red herring of the Oregon land use system. We do a 20-year plan for public facility planning that says we're going to plan to this much of planned density within our city limits with our infrastructure systems. Our wastewater plan is meant to support this much density. Our transportation plan is meant to support that much density, the water plan. And then we come in behind it 20 years later and say, put more density in your city limits, but your infrastructure system is only built to do the first threshold. So we have an infrastructure system that's been designed for our current conditions. And we're being asked to look at it and see how we can, you know, increase the current conditions to a potential of four times the density. People don't think that that four times the density will be realized, but we have to have the infrastructure to support it. The bills are very clear about that. The fact that you don't have the infrastructure to support it is not a reason not to move forward with the mandate of the bill. You've got to figure out as a city how you're going to do it. The other thing we think is important in McMinnville, based on things that have occurred recently, is what will it look like? When we have public hearings at the planning commission level and listening to people testify, there's a lot of angst about what a new, different type of product in a single-family dwelling unit neighborhood is going to look like. The impact to curb appeal, property value, et cetera, et cetera. And so we think, and with what's going on with what's being built at the Baker Creek West subdivision where we're getting a lot of comments about that, we do think that residential design is important. And so when you start talking about duplexes and triplexes and quadplexes, you can really come in with impactful, non-compatible residential design into these neighborhoods that have been so beautifully built out. And that would really change the look and feel of that neighborhood forever. So we do think that that will be important for McMinnville and something we need to consider. Those are the two big things we see with this mandate. What we've put in place so far is we have a draft housing strategy that came out of our Housing Needs Analysis Program that's planning for growth, McMinnville style. It did bring, it did account for a lot of what was in this House bill. We were aware of it and we wanted to, we didn't know if it would be passed or not. We thought it would. We also thought it was a good intentional policy relative to our Great Neighborhood Principles. So we started designing it into our housing strategy. And you have been provided with that. So some of the actions in the housing strategy build towards responding to this bill and also McMinnville's housing strategy that we're recommending. So one of the strategies is for housing development in the existing UGB is to create a diverse housing zone. So one that allows more housing types. Promote infill development, allowing flexibility in existing zones, but have appropriate design and development standards to promote that infill development. And then update infrastructure plans to accommodate the infill development. So all those are strategies that we'd already identified. Under infrastructure and public facilities planning, a couple of the actions were assess the infrastructure capacity, support infill within the existing city limits, develop infrastructure allocation policies. So what that means is if you have a infrastructure plan that says, we, as a wastewater conveyance system, we can support this many units at full buildout across the city. We've put the pipes in the ground to support this. This is our maximum based on that 20-year threshold. But we think that this is going to develop long before this. I think of the water zone too up at the West Hills. It's going to be a while before that develops. So can we take some of that sewer capacity associated with that and assign it over here to somebody who wants to do more density over here and work towards solving this problem down the road? Buy ourselves some time. So that's what an infrastructure allocation policy does. We don't have that in McMinnville today. It is something that a lot of communities do do, though. And then we also talked about the need to identify areas with underutilized infrastructure capacity. Again, robbing Peter to pay Paul, are there places where we can take capacity and put it over here where we may have constraints? So residential design and development standards, protecting McMinnville's small-town charm, we're doing this right now. So we are underway with this project as a planning team. We've been working on it for about the last six months. Based on the discussions that we saw occurring at the state level and then also what's happening at our housing strategy level. So if you look at these pictures again that I showed you, and these are really common pictures when talking about missing middle housing. There's a lot of common elements in terms of that middle housing. They all look cute, don't they? I mean, these are great little prototypes. Those are beautiful. Wouldn't you like to have those in your community? That's okay. I can see that happening in my community. But that, our current design and development standards could yield something very different from this. And so we're setting out expectations that missing middle is going to look like these cute little prototypes with pitched roofs and great fenestrations, window patterns and doors and things like that. Whereas if you don't have design standards, you can end up with something very different. So a duplex that's on the left there versus the duplex on the right. And that's where the compatibility comes in. And so we feel that for McMinnville, it's important as a community value, we don't, we haven't had residential design standards before. So for everyone who's upset about Baker Creek West subdivision, we don't have design standards in the code. So, but it's tough for us to require something. However, if we do put it in place and lots of communities do have it, then we're saying as a minimum, we'd like to see this in our community. Some other examples, so that's my drawing on the left, but if you drive around McMinnville, you actually see this. I have a theory. I never use local photographs for my bad examples. So I drew it, but there are streets with that very type of duplex on it. Or you could have a duplex like what's on the right there, which would fit in lots of the single-family residential neighborhoods here in McMinnville, similar to this one. This is a corner duplex. That's a fairly common central Oregon product. So you have entry points on the different corners, but that would fit into many of our neighborhoods as well where people wouldn't really think that it's all that difference. And then here's a fourplex. We have lots of those in town based on my drawing on the left. And then there's a fourplex on the right. So I'm assuming people aren't going to want lots of what's on the left of my hand-drawn drawing as potential infill in their neighborhoods. And so we were talking a lot about what could be different residential design standards. This is another duplex product, which looks a lot different than that. I call it the Soviet Union block residential duplex and quadplex. And I did take a year of architectural classes. Shows what I do. This is a cottage cluster development. So this is one of those, you know, four or more of these smaller units. But again, design standards got it to what that is today. And we have a cottage cluster development that's underway in the community that the Rudens will be building. And it'll be very similar to this because design's important to them. So what they build is a beautiful product, but we can't mandate that every developer build like that without a code to require minimum standards. For those who don't understand cottage clusters, it's bringing several different residential, smaller residential units onto a single parcel and developing it in such a way that there's common space shared by those units. And a lot of these have been done in other communities where they're coming into single-family neighborhoods on larger parcels in those neighborhoods and nestling in there very nicely.
Heather, you know, the boutique that's going to be on Alpine 9th, although that is going to be rental property, is that kind of a cottage cluster?
A little bit. It's a little bit different because we didn't have a code.
Okay.
There's a fairly standard code for cottage clusters that creates this, which people are comfortable with. And we didn't have that code for that one. They're putting a nice product together, but it will be a little different than what's commonly referred as cottage cluster. The Rudens, we have a draft code and the Rudens are going to be using our draft code for their product. And that will be going in a single-family neighborhood. I think it's going to nestle in there well. The other concern, though, is, and I am using one local photograph, but it's a little blurry, so. But without residential design standards, we don't have a means of sort of capturing this, right? And actually, when you look at missing middle housing, again, looks cute. This is what's a typical picture used to discuss missing middle housing, but this is cookie cutter production housing. They're all the same prototype. And so if that's something we want in McMinnville, that's one thing. If it's something we don't want in McMinnville, that's another thing. And I've often heard we don't want to look like the metro communities where there's a lot of this going on. There's ways to bring in this type of infill into single-family residential neighborhoods. So you can bring it in on the edge like what's described here. You can do infill products. If you do it, again, all cute prototypes, though. And so if we have, that's why we feel the residential design standards are important. Because if you have the right design standards, it can fit into a neighborhood fairly nicely and not be that impactful to the neighborhood around it. It just is creating more units. So in our Great Neighborhood Principles, we had a proposal. Our comp plan is set up where it has policies and then it has proposals. Proposals are future work the city needs to undertake to implement the policies. And so we have Proposal 46 that says a city shall develop development codes that allow for a variety of housing types and forms and shall develop site and design requirements for those housing types and form. So that was, once we adopted the principles, that's where we started working on this other piece. These are some samples of the work that's underway. It's all in draft form. But what we're going to do is adopt this into the development code. And it's going to show how these different types of forms of housing can fit on a 10,000-square-foot lot in an existing subdivision and fit on it in such a way where it's not impacting the regular rhythm of the street, so setbacks are similar and not impact the neighborhoods in any way other than what a single-family residential home would impact them. It will have development standards, so lot sizes, setbacks, all that sort of stuff associated with it. We'll be looking at standards for lots with alleys and without alleys because we have both those prototypes in town. And then we're doing it in such a way where we're going to address tiny homes. So we're going to address cottage clusters, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes. We're going to do multifamily and we're going to do small lot subdivisions. So we're trying to put it into place so that we can capture all the different products that we're seeing discussed in this community right now, also respond to the mandate of House Bill 2001 and try to provide that flexible housing strategy that we talked about in terms of what our future population will need and want. This is an example of some of the product that will go in the development code as well. This is an example of some of the product that will go in the development code as well. So we're going to do some visuals to help establish expectations. Design standards are very visual, and so it's very helpful to have those as part of this, as the expectation of the community. And then we'll do lot layouts as well. So this is a cottage cluster development. In terms of infrastructure capacity, this is the Big Lift, and we haven't started work on this yet. This is the discussion for tonight. So what does this mean? Cities have to accommodate this mandate by updating all their infrastructure plans for their existing city limits and investing in the appropriate infrastructure support. So in McMinnville, I'm sorry, I should say wastewater and transportation are a concern. John Deeds would have issues with me putting water up there, because I think their system is set up for it. But our wastewater master plan and our transportation master plan are set up for a density that's much less than the city mandate, the bill mandate. And we're at capacity on a lot of it. And so that's a concern. How do you build on an existing system supporting existing built-out environment? So they were designed for a proposed density than the current maximum density in the residential zones. So right now, our infrastructure planning is for less density than what the existing residential zones can yield in terms of maximum density. And now we're being asked to open the maximum density in all of our residential zones. So we're that much further apart. The wastewater fix is a discussion of larger network pipes. So our reclamation facility, the treatment plant's in good shape. It has a good future plan. It can accommodate more growth in there. But our network that's under the streets, the pipes that are under the street are constrained in some places and can't support additional growth and capacity. And so that's, that will be a process of pulling those pipes up and putting bigger pipes down. That's, there's cost involved with that, but we can fix those. Transportation's a more difficult discussion. Transportation, to fix a road in terms of how much that road can accommodate at a level of congestion that communities are comfortable with, and those are community values, that, if you're making the road bigger, that's real estate. You're buying the real estate to make the road bigger, and then you're investing in making the road bigger. And if you're making the road bigger, you're making the intersections bigger, and it's, it just snowballs on itself. It's a much tougher fix.
And as we know, we look at the transportation bond, and, you know, we had two major, big projects in there, and the time commitment, the money commitment, and the cost is tremendous.
And by the way, you don't have the time, because we have June 30th, 2022, in front of us. But we'll walk through that. There is, there are some pieces in there, and that's part of the stuff that we provided from the city in McMinnville, was some exit ramps for a little bit to fix, to work through some of these issues. But to describe some of the wastewater capacity issues, we have historically, if somebody wanted to upzone in McMinnville, they had to do, and they still do, actually, have to do a wastewater analysis. So they have to work with our consultant, who has the model for our wastewater conveyance system, and see if the wastewater system can support the increased density. So the upzoning, putting more units on a piece of property than what was originally planned for. And that's a $12,000 analysis that the developer bears. We've had a lot of projects come in recently. We've been working hard at upzoning so that we could get some apartments, multifamily development going in McMinnville for affordable housing issues. And so we've had, you've seen them come through you, some rezones from R1 to R4, R2 to R4. And so we did a citywide analysis to understand where our pinch points are in terms of capacity. And one of these is showing, this is an example, so we have a developer who's bought two pieces of property on Second Street. They're zoned R2. They would like to rezone them to R4 so that they can put more units on those property. They can't do it. Our wastewater system will not support it. For them to be able to do that, they need to replace 3,700 linear feet of sewer line between Westvale Street and Tamarack Street, well, in Westvale Street and Tamarack Street, between Second Street and Cypress Lane. So they need to go and replace pipe, make, put in larger pipe in a system that's not adjacent to their property to be able to go from six units to 12 units on this acreage.
And so that's right now?
That is right now, today.
That's right now, today, but in two years, they won't have to go for a rezone because they'll just be permitted to do this, and it'll be, and the city will need to make sure that that pipe is ready.
Yeah, yeah. And as Mike, if Mike was here tonight, what he would tell you is if, when we say there's no capacity, that's a public health issue, because it means we won't be able to convey the sewer, sewage through the system, and it could come up.
And what about our treatment plant, which I know is a Mike question, but?
So from what I understand from Mike, and we have, we needed, so we haven't done this, any of this analysis yet, so I don't want to speak for Mike in terms of conclusions, but he's fairly comfortable that the treatment plant, in terms of how it's planned and built today, can accommodate the expected growth from this mandate. So in the bill, you'll see that it says that cities shouldn't expect more than 3% of redevelopment initially. It doesn't say how many units that looks to, but they wanted to ensure that, one, it wasn't used against cities in terms of their buildable lands inventory effort, so the Home Builders Association participated in it, and that was their participation. And then, two, it's not clear to me how we do the infrastructure planning in terms of, do we use that 3% as our sort of future forecast for growth that we're looking at, or do we have to use another forecast? And DLCD, Department of Land Conservation Development's working on that right now, what that looks like. So we don't know what the parameters are that we have to plan into yet. In terms of transportation, so this came up earlier in our work session, so we just went through a discussion about our local residential street standards. They're all, they're planned and built for 1,280, so average daily trips. If we're, if we take that Oak Ridge Meadows development, which has, and we talked about this at the public hearing, if there's 108 lots on there and this House bill goes through, those 108 lots could be anything from a single-family residential development to a quadplex or even a cottage cluster development or more. So that's going to be putting more trips on the, on the road. When the bill was first written, they took transportation out of it in terms of infrastructure planning. So there's an exit ramp in the bill that says, "If you city cannot guarantee that you can serve something with infrastructure with your planning over the next two years, we'll give you an additional six months to come up with a plan as to how you're going to do it." And then, once you've come up with a plan as to how you're going to do it, you need to tell us in what timeframe you're going to do it, and it has to be reasonable. And then, within that timeframe, you have to change that neighborhood's zoning to allow this to occur. Transportation was not on the exit ramp. So they, they did not, they said, "Transportation, we're, you know what? It's, we're ignoring that. That's not an issue. Wastewater's a public health issue. We will put that in there." We argued it needed to be in there. For smaller communities like McMinnville, where we don't have a robust transit system, we don't have alternative networks that we can rely on, we're not really a strong bike-peg commuter community. People rely on their vehicles. The transportation network's going to be important, and we need to have that community dialogue. What does the community dialogue look like? I don't know, because, again, like we just described, if our 1,200 average daily trips is going to bounce up to 1,600 average daily trips, that road right-of-way is going to remain the same for the most part. So how do we get there? Do we just come to agreement on congestion, or are there other means of getting there? I did want to provide to you, we did a quick scrub. We work typically with six to eight, what we consider comparable communities, so they're not metro-oriented. They're sort of, you know, self-sustaining communities like McMinnville of a similar size, to see what their standards are for transportation as we go through this process, so that we understand how far behind we are or are not in terms of our expectation and built environment versus what other communities are handling. And so we are on the low end. The 1,200 average daily trips is a lower value for our local residential standards. Our comparables communities are a little bit higher, and the ones that are a little bit higher are the ones that are, that have a value system of going into a more dense development in terms of residential development. Our housing strategy, as I provided to you in that joint work session with the county commissioners, does have a strategy of going into a more densely developed residential neighborhood. So we will, we have to have this conversation somehow.
How, in kind of like long-term planning, and this question kind of stems from some previous conversations around planning and traffic and parking and et cetera, I don't know, on a scale of 1 to 10, or some, in some way, I mean, how much of a concern is this? If we see that what we're trending towards, you know, in the next 30 to 50 years is less reliance on cars, I mean, do we want to plan to solve a problem that will solve itself within a relatively short period of time and knowing that, you know, the city is not going to quadruple in two to five years?
Right, yeah. So, I mean, that's, that's the strategic piece of it, but there's always the emotional piece of it. And I will tell you, traffic and parking's a big dialogue here in McMinnville. We hear it all the time. But yes, I mean, we will, our habits will change in terms of how we use vehicles in future years. That's coming. It's just a matter of when. We don't know when, but it's, but it definitely is coming. And there are many communities who are planning for that, so planning now for that. So if you remember, when I give presentations about growth, I always say, "What we build will be here for 150 years." We don't tear up our roads very often and change the right-of-way structure. We'll come over and, we'll come in and repave or put overlays, but the curbs stay the same for the most part, for a long time. So building for today's habits, understanding that future habits in the near future are going to change, it's a, you know, it's not a great future planning model. But people within their existing lifestyle are very, you know, emotionally connected to it.
Emotionally connected to convenience?
I, I don't know. I can't answer that.
I mean, I do love a good cobblestone street.
I just know we hear it a lot. It just seems like they're going to have to really kind of more seriously consider than they have to this point, Mastraad said. It's just going to be almost a requirement. Yeah, but that's also, I mean, every new fixed route is $600,000 a year, so, you know, that's also very expensive. It's, it's coming up with different values. And what was interesting, I think I spoke with some of you after the Oak Ridge Meadows public hearing, when Mike made the comment that with the adoption of the transportation system plan and the standards that were adopted with it, there was a conscientious decision to accept more congestion in McMinnville with those standards. But if you look at the list, those standards are actually on the low end of the list. So we're going to have that conversation again.
Adam?
Oh, my question was more around, why is a city required to fund the sewer system updates where the developer out on the west end is asked to pay for the water system upgrade?
Yeah, so there's nothing that says a city has to, so the bill doesn't say anything about who's going to fund it. The bill just says, "You need to have a plan as to how this is going to happen so that you city can open up your zones and allow these types of products to occur." So the city could make a decision that it's a developer, it's on the developer, and the cost is on the developer, and that's the plan.
So you could say, "Yes, all these uses are permitted in all our residential zones, but it's self-funded by the developer?"
No, so if you read the bill, it does say that there's reasonability language in there, and so there will be some czar who decides what's deemed reasonable and what's not in that regard.
Thank you. Stowe?
So I just want to make sure I understand kind of the highlights. HB 2001 is going to increase, it looks like your planning department's out-of-budget cost by $190,000 to $400,000 just to, just to update our master plan?
Yeah, so I'll go through this part of it, too.
Sorry, I'm ahead of, okay.
I haven't put cost to this yet. This is, this is what the LOC did.
That was League of Oregon City's estimate. Well, I had a second one that might be germane to your previous portion of testimony. So the infrastructure in the city, what you said, is it's designed for less than maximum density, and HB 2001 requires us by right to change all R1 zones to accommodate these new...
All our residential zones, not just the R1.
Sorry. So that's required improvements to road, water, sewer, electrical, and all of those carry different kinds of taxpayer costs. Has there been any conversation about other alternative ways to fund some of these beyond what we have always done in Oregon, or are we just kind of stuck with the same set of tools as a result of HB?
There, so through the dialogue of when the, so the House bill, what I can share with you is only my experience. From what I understand, and I sit on the Board of the Oregon City Planning Directors Association, and I'm on the Oregon APA Association, so the two planning organizations in the state of Oregon. We were not involved in the crafting of House Bill 2001. So the planning industry was not at the table when the House bill was put together. It came out and we responded to it. And so, and we responded to it by providing testimony and requesting a meeting with staff. We didn't, we were still not part of the, the group that got together to craft the amendments. Planning industry was still not there. So that was our question. How does, how do we do this? Who's funding this? Who's going to be paying for this? If the question is inclusivity and affordability and you put all the costs on the developer, that's not achieving the goal. Cities aren't in a place where they have funds to do this. We don't have a system in place where we've been collecting SDCs to build this larger infrastructure system within our city limits. So we asked all those questions. It hasn't, I don't, I think now, cities are putting their heads together, so there's lots of these conversations taking place between planning departments and councils to say, "Here's our mandate, and we got to figure out how we're going to respond." I don't know what the answers are. I can tell you, the League of Oregon Cities estimated that the cost to respond to the mandate of the bill was anywhere between $250,000 and $400,000 for the hard dollars out the door for consultants to do the infrastructure planning, the modeling for the wastewater and transportation system plans and stuff. Another $250,000 of dedicated staff time. So you're taking that from something else, those billable hours, right? And then the bill allocates $3.5 million to help with the work. So that $3.5 million is funding some DLCD staff to help with the work. And then there's 53 cities that have, that are subject to this mandate. So if we do the math, let's pretend DLCD's not using any of this $3.5 million for their staffing, it's only $66,000 per city.
Okay.
But there is a big gap.
I want to make sure I heard the facts that you just gave right. So the, the LOC estimated $250,000 to $400,000 for a consultant, and additional $250,000 in staff time out-of-budget, and the legislature set up a fund that essentially would cover $66,000 per city if it were allocated across all 53 cities.
Yeah, and, but there's language in the bill, so I don't know where they came up with the $3.5 million. We weren't part of those discussions. LOC did a survey of the cities that would be impacted, and we all provide what we thought, you know, our wild guesses would be. And so I think that's where their numbers are coming from. And the $3.5 million, there's language in the bill that says it's, the priority structure would be that it would go to cities with less staff to achieve the mandate who are in a willing and early position to do so. So we've raised our hand very aggressively through the last six months as we went through the House bill process. I have a meeting with the state on Friday to talk about, our hand is raised. We'd like a large portion of that, will lead the way, but we need money to help us do that.
Thank you, Heather.
So the plans, the infrastructure plans, to get, to have the exit ramp of our infrastructure, so we'll go back to Second Street and that 3,700 linear feet of wastewater pipes that we need to replace, we don't have, in that neighborhood, we can't do this rezoning yet because we don't have the infrastructure system to support it. It's going to cost, I'm going to pull numbers out, but then they're not real numbers. But let's say it's $4 million. We don't have it. We can't put the pipes in the ground by June 30th, 2022. Here's our, here's the reason why we can't do it, our need, and here's how we're going to respond to the need and make it happen. We can submit that to the state to ask for an extension of six more months to figure out how to make that happen. We need to have that into the state by February 2021. So we need to have our infrastructure plans done to understand what we can and cannot do and the costs associated with them prior to that.
By what date?
Maybe it's February 2022. I'm going to look at the bill again for that. That feels wrong to me.
Because that wouldn't be an extension, would it?
Yeah, yeah, because then that would give the state over a year to review our request for an extension, and that doesn't feel right. So I'll look at the bill and see if that's, that's the case. But then we have to also identify what the capital improvement program is and how we're going to fund the upgrades, to your question, Counselor Peralta. How are we going to do it?
Can I ask a question about if areas that are totally built out are treated any differently than areas that still have bare lots and land?
No.
All of them have, you have to assume that people would raise all those buildings and put in the density.
Because it's an infill redevelopment proposal. I know this may be a little off-topic, but I'm just thinking back to how
I know this may be a little off-topic, but I'm just thinking back to how our code was originally written with the ADUs and how they were requiring separate systems to be put in with the ADUs. And I'm thinking, that may be the reason why.
So, other mandates, that's not the only mandates, there's more, but the others are easier. So the other mandates of House Bill 2001, it does, it does talk about ADUs. So the last legislative session, 2017, passed a bill saying all cities need to do this with accessory dwelling units. Cities did it, some cities didn't go far enough, so this bill is making cities go further. And what this says is that you need to remove the requirements for off-street parking. So if you have an accessory dwelling unit, you can't require them to have additional off-street parking. We do. When that went through Planning Commission, that was, I think, Councilor Geary, you were on Planning Commission at the time, that was a considerable discussion, and people felt parking's an issue in McMinnville in terms of congestion on the street. And so we require that. We have to remove that requirement now. And then we also, if we had an owner-occupied status as part of our code, we'd have to remove that. We removed that when we went through the ADU update previously. We have to explore policies and programs that include, but are not limited to, and this is language in the bill, and some of this will sound familiar to you. We have to look at waiving or deferring system development charges for affordable housing, we've done that. We have to look at adopting or amending criteria for property tax exemptions, that's on a local side. So locally, we say you're tax exempt if you have this qualifying project. We haven't done that, and we haven't had that discussion, but that is in our housing strategy, to have the discussion. And we have to look at assessing a construction excise tax for affordable housing. And we've had, been exploring that discussion for the last two years. The third mandate under the other is annual reporting. We do a lot of annual reporting to the state. This adds more to that, where we are going to need to report on all new middle housing units built in the previous year. And they'll put together a template as to how we do that. So the next steps are to, we feel we need to finish the residential site design and development standards and start a public engagement on them. We'd like to get them done by the middle of the fall and start the public engagement over the next year. We feel it'll be like a year's discussion to get people used to this concept and what it looks and feels like. And then with a targeted date, again, of a February 2021 adoption. So we want to move early on that one with the design standards. We need to identify a timeframe and scope of work for the infrastructure planning to support the bill mandate. And mind you, we don't have anything in our adopted budget to support these types of plan efforts right now. And we're looking at a targeted date for that, and I'm going to confirm what that is. But we do think that there may be an opportunity to combine, we do also need to do public infrastructure planning for the growth analysis. So we need to do infrastructure planning for a potential UGB expansion, which is what our growth analysis is driving towards. Looks like we're going to need to do that. And if we're going to do urban reserve area reconnaissance level infrastructure planning, so there might be an opportunity to do a combined scope of work, save some funds. If we're going to hire a consultant to look at, within the city, can they also look outside the city and put a whole system together? And so we'll have discussion about what that means for you, City Council, as we work through that in terms of cost savings. So the goal of this, of the bill is to have the inclusive neighborhoods, and our goal is to have inclusive neighborhoods that maintain McMinnville's small-town charm and the quality of the built-out neighborhoods that we have here. So we're looking at design and development standards and infrastructure planning. And that is the House Bill 2001.
Thank you, Heather. Questions of Heather? I mean, this is the beginning of a discussion I think we're going to have to take on at a later time, but again, some real revelations for, if we haven't been following this House Bill 2001 that carefully, is going to put a lot of strain on our financing of infrastructure. And we're right in the middle of a transportation bond that we're, we're working on, and so it's going to be, it's going to be interesting. So, any questions of Heather? We've asked quite a few questions. I, I think, you know, do you see us having a work session on this, so that we can get some direction early on? I mean, we've done some really good things on our great neighborhoods. We've had some of those discussions, I think, of what neighborhoods will need to look like, and I think it's been inclusive of some of this. But not all of us have had an opportunity to go those, to those, so I think, I think we, our discussion now needs to talk about, you know, the work we have done over the last year, year and a half. But now we have the criteria in front of us. So I would, I would suggest that, you know, in one of those October, November work sessions that are open, this is another topic that would come back, and that we could help assist the planning department to, to know some direction to go. I'll throw that out. Any other comments? Heather, again, thank you. Sobering thoughts.
Yep.
That takes us now to our reports from council on committee assignments and, that were, and board assignments that we're involved in. And so I'm going to do it a little differently. I'm going to start with Wendy, and go to Remy, and go to Zach, and then I'm going to go to Sal, Adam, and Kelly. So change it up a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did have a MURAC meeting. We looked at, well, actually, before the MURAC meeting, we had a really interesting meeting, which was the City Center Housing Strategy Report, which was a really good comprehensive look. It was the first report back from the consultant, and it was a request for direction. She gave us, they gave us some ideas of different products that could be used for city center housing, and they gave us an evaluation of costs, and that would go into developing those, and what that would look like with regards to a sale or rental values, and what would fit in McMinnville, what wouldn't. She got some feedback from us on direction of different products that, that we wanted her to go more deeply into and come back with some more detailed information. So it was a really interesting conversation. We talked a lot about parking, and, and land value, and different barriers, construction costs, and things like that. And so that was an excellent conversation. Expect to hear more back from us after they come back. It was very sobering as well, looking at the costs and the barriers. And then we also looked at the application for the cottage homes was one of the ones that we looked at, and we did give them some grant funding, half the amount that they requested. And then we had a sneak peek into another property that's at the corner of Lafayette and Ninth, that will be asking for a $100,000 loan, possibly, and also the $20,000, but they are not ready to submit that application yet. So that was the bulk of what was talked about.
Thank you, Wendy. Remy?
Thank you. The Housing for Homeless Subcommittee met yesterday. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there, so I can't give a good report on it, but I know there was a presentation from YCAP. And then McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force met earlier in the week. We're in the process right now of inviting community partners to see if there's some opportunities to leverage some of the state funds that have recently become available, especially for permanent supportive housing initiatives. And so those conversations are fairly broad, and they're happening both inside of that Affordable Housing Task Force meeting, but also outside of it with various community partners. And that's, I think that's my report in brief.
Thank you, Remy.
In-between meetings for Historic Landmarks and Landscape Committee upcoming on the Quarterly McMinnville Community Media Meeting, I think, next week, and Kids on the Block Technical Advisory Committee, which Adam and I are on, came before you guys recently, so we're cranking away and hopefully meeting with the school board and doing the shuffle.
Thank you, Zach. Sal?
You, Sal.
League of Oregon Cities, excuse me, Mid Valley Council of Governments Executive Committee met yesterday. I wasn't able to attend. We're meeting next week. The main bit of news is I think they're going to probably cancel this year's Yamhill County Dinner, just for a lack of attendance in past years. Also, I've been kind of making the rounds in terms of doing a fair amount of constituent work with, along with some other members of the council, and I just wanted to bring forward an idea that I've talked to with staff a little bit, just for consideration by the board, perhaps at a future meeting, which is that I think we need to maybe take a little bit of time and do a community survey to try and get feedback and, from members of the community, about their impressions of the city currently, what could we be doing better as a community. And crucially, to use that as an opportunity to allow people to opt in, to get future communications from us as a city, so that we can basically make sure that people are well-informed about what we're doing on a going-forward basis. So I just wanted to make that as a suggestion to the board for consideration.
And, and any insights in, as to how they would like us to communicate, or is it just a concern at this point?
I'll share, I'll share some written materials, maybe with the full, the full board, if that, is that okay for me to do by email?
Sure. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd say send it to City Manager.
And then?
And then he'll send it out. Okay, thank you.
Couple weeks away from the Oregon Air Show, so that's pretty sweet. Maybe. So that's Airport Commission stuff. YCOM, where you don't have a meeting this month due to the sheriff, our chair being gone out of conference, and our director being gone out of conference. So we'll loop back around in October, and should have plenty to talk about since we haven't met in three months. And outside of that, I would like to float an idea to council of, whether it's our first meeting or second meeting of the month, going back to dinner meetings before council. I, I feel that we've lost something. I think it's hard to really convey exactly what that is. I just feel that council is different now, being in work session mode at every meeting. And I do see values in the work sessions, that's why I'm saying one of the two meetings, and we just pick, whether that's the second meeting of the month or the first meeting of the month. And then we still have our Wednesday night work session, and we still have our other work session before council meeting, but I think that would unite us more as a council. We would, the small things that fall between the cracks, that we don't hear up here in reports, just that informal discussion, I think, we're missing as a council.
Any comments on that?
I'll make one. You know, I, I really advocated to get rid of the dinner session. I felt like what was happening is we were having this meeting that was happening before the public meeting, and we asked all our questions, and we vetted all this information, and then we got up here and everybody just kind of agreed and went along with something. And so it seemed like there was a detriment to public information flow because of that. And then, having said that, I agree that there was a sense of community that was formed over sharing a meal together that is very different and has definitely been lost by not doing that. So I think I would just encourage, if we move forward in that vein, that maybe we consider the way in which that happens. I don't know if that means it's out here instead of in there around a table, or that there's, or, or what it is, but I would be supportive of it, save from that idea that, you know, or aware of the, what was being lost then in the public process. But I, I agree, I think that there's just a lot of general goodwill that's, that's created when you're sharing a meal with somebody.
Any other thoughts? Sal?
Yeah, I, I actually think that it would restore quite a bit to the public process, just allowing us to convene and discuss things in a public meeting setting, where we have very precious few opportunities to have frank conversations. And so I would very much be in favor of, of doing that once a month.
Okay. I, I think there's just been enough comment, that we'll turn that over to Jeff to, to talk. I'll tell you what I miss, is having that opportunity to see staff members, heads of departments, and interact with them. I mean, we come, and we have a hard time even getting here to start on time, and then our meetings do go long, and then we have commitments at home, and we're tired. And so it's like ships passing in the night, where before, we really were able to connect with one another as a council and a staff. And I miss staff as much, and I'm, you know, I have more time and opportunity to do that than you, and I still miss that. So we'll, we'll take a look and see. Okay, thank you, Adam. Kelly?
Well, I, I agree. I think it'd be a great idea. Probably the only meeting that, visit McMinnville did not meet this last month, and so the only meeting that I've really attended recently is homelessness meeting. And it's true, we did have a, a nice rundown from YCAP on their approaches to getting people to, into the system. And they have a whole packet, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the name of it all, but it, it was an excellent one. Heather was there, and I'd like her to at least talk about the women's shelter, even though it's a little nebulous about who's going to actually be handling it. I think it's, it's kind of a nice coup for the city that we've got it finally done.
So first of all, the program YCAP has, which is a first-entry program for homeless people, there's always the question of, where can I go to get information about services for homeless people? YCAP has a program called Any Door, yamhillcounty.org. And so for anybody who has questions about what services are available, that's the first entry in. And what it does is YCAP will take in the information of who needs help, and then they'll bring services to them and work with their partners to do so. So a really great program. It's been in place since 2017, and I think they said they, they had 6,000 cases that they had worked through the system in that timeframe, so wanted to get that out there. And we have cards at the Community Development Center with information about that. Relative to the partnership with the county, we've been working on this for a while now. The county has, receives properties that go into foreclosure that haven't paid their property taxes, and so it goes into ownership at the county. And they typically do auctions of those properties to the public. And we approached them and said, if you have homes that are part of those properties in the city of McMinnville, is there an opportunity to have a discussion about a collaboration where the city can buy, purchase the home from you for whatever the back taxes are, so that the overlapping taxing districts get their foregone taxes? And then we would then work with partners and developers to put those homes into affordable housing programs. And the intent behind that is that the city would then do a request for proposal from developers to say, if you buy this home, presumably at a reduced rate, and you invest in it, rehab it, because usually these properties need some investment, would you then put it in service with a nonprofit housing provider for a certain number of years, for free, so that goes to the nonprofit housing provider for free, so that somebody has a shelter for, for a home? And Henderson House has been one of our first partners that we've talked to about that, because of the increasing numbers of people fleeing domestic violence that are experiencing homelessness and, you know.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So we are in the process of our first home in that program, and we'll be bringing that to you as City Council here very shortly. It's a home that will cost the city a little less than $15,000. There are developers who are already interested in participating in the program, so we'll get an RFP out and put that paperwork together. And hopefully, over the winter time, they'll be able to do the investment in the redevelopment, and it will go into service sometime in the summer. So it's, it puts a property back in, it rehabs a property, puts it into good condition in a neighborhood, puts it into affordable housing for a certain number of years, and then eventually is part of our overall market rate housing supply.
Thank you, Kelly. I've been out of town for 10 days, but just to let those that were planning on the county Housing Solutions Meeting that was scheduled for this week, Commissioner Kula moved that to Friday from 4:00 to 5:30 in Dundee, because they were having extended meetings on five commissioners, and he felt he couldn't get out from that. Also, last Thursday, we had MWA, the Midwill Amit Transportation Advisory Committee meeting, and Patrick, who is a counselor in, Patrick Johnson, a counselor in Newburgh, attended in my absence. We were talking about some STIP money, transportation money, and we had our, our lobbyist there talking about the Newburgh-Dundee bypass, and, and our needs for additional dollars about the Newburgh-Dundee bypass and our needs for additional dollars to, at least on phase two, to get this through design and right-of-way acquisition. And so we'll be hearing more back from there. Department head, chief?
Real quickly, as Councilor Garvin said, today we had our second-to-last Oregon International Air Show meeting with our public safety partners, ODOT, DOJ, all the above, actually, weather services involved as well. So I think we're positioned really well to handle this, this event. And just wanted to say that I am actually looking forward to it, something that I was not so optimistic on maybe a year ago. But that being said, tremendous amount of work being done. Secondly, we did have a couple officers graduate from the academy last Friday. We've got, we hired or sworn in somebody yesterday as well, so we're sort of in training mode again. And we look forward to bringing another person on in about a month to fill the final vacancy that we have with the retirement. Lastly, I wanted to just quickly let you know about the prohibited camping ordinance that we, that we put into effect in, that was put into effect in June. I will tell you that there have been a tremendous number of public safety agencies in other cities within the valley that have reached out to myself, Captain Jasko, looking for information about how this program, how the ordinance was rolled out, conjunction with the car camping program. And they're really sort of mystified in the way that it worked out as well as it did. And give kudos to the courts as well. But I just wanted to share that with you, that our work product's been shared with OACP or chief's group, as well as numerous other agencies within the valley that have taken note about the manner in which this, this problem and this issue was addressed. So I would just like to share that with you.
Thank you, chief. And I know I've had a number of the mayors in Yamhill County reach out to me. We know that Carlton has, with their attorney, taken on an ordinance that looks much like ours. And I've talked to the other mayors and given them, you know, that they could just reach out and get that information. So commissioners have also wanted to take a look at it so that we'd have the same ordinance in place for the county, so that we would be dealing with the same approach across the plate. So kudos to the council for doing what we've done. Chief, Rich?
Mr. Mayor and counselors, this evening, I didn't bring a PowerPoint, but I do have a video. Could you cue the video? No. I'm here this evening to just touch base on, and give council an update on the feasibility study for the collaboration or cooperation or the consolidation of the fire districts. There's a company that has gone through an RFP process already through a group purchasing through Western Fire Chiefs. We are, have a scope of work drafted and sent to them for their quotes based off of the group purchasing quote process that they've already gone through. We should have a quote back from them within a couple of weeks. I believe we're scheduled for, hopefully, get that quote back for a conversation with council on the 24th, I believe, is the meeting. Will be agenda item for council to take some action. We've received positive feedback from all of the fire districts but one, and fire departments but one, that would like to participate in this feasibility study. So the, the process of coordinating and preparing the scope of work has already been accomplished. The feasibility study will be a four-phase process, running through probably end of March, beginning of April. And at the next meeting, I'll, I'll work with the city manager, and we'll have some timetables laid out and some, some more information to follow along with what this feasibility study looks like, and then post-feasibility study as we move forward into the not-too-distant future with some decision points and some issues the council will have to action on.
Thank you, chief. Jeff, would you like to introduce Elizabeth?
Sure. I'd like to introduce to the council Elizabeth Comfort, who's our interim finance director. Elizabeth spent a few hours, the last couple of weeks that Marcia was here, meeting with Marcia and meeting some key staff in the organization, sort of doing a brain dump and looking at Marcia's bucket list. Marcia walked out of the office happy and supported and celebrated the Friday before Labor Day. She got on a plane on Wednesday after Labor Day. For about the last three days, she's been basking in the glow of an Iowa State Hawkeyes shutout win over the Rutgers Scarlet Knights. And about now, she's starting to get stressed out that game day is going to be in Ames, Iowa, for the big Iowa State-Iowa game this Saturday. So she's successfully transitioned into retirement. Elizabeth comes to us with a broad range of municipal and other governmental accounting experience, including nonprofit and special district. She's worked for at least three cities in her career. She's hit the ground running, and you'll get a chance to hear from her briefly tonight and in more detail in the next couple of council meetings as we bring to you some year-end reporting. So happy to officially introduce and welcome Elizabeth to the McMinnville team.
Welcome, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to be brief because I've just had a few days to get through with this, to look at our financials. We are closing up and wrapping up the last fiscal year, fiscal year 2018-19. Our auditors show up on November 11th. So what I'm going to just share with you real quickly is where we're looking at the year-end for our general fund reserve. We'd budgeted 16% of where we're going to end up, and that really is made up of our contingency and our unended fund balance. And of course, we only spent 84% of our expenditures, so it is going to be up about 27% for the year-end.
I like that.
Property taxes up 7%, so that contributed a little bit on the revenue aspect of that. And then I just wanted to touch about our ambulance billing. I don't know if you guys are aware, but we transferred the billing for those services to an outsourced. They are out of the state of Washington. They officially took over March 1st, and they got through all the billing in August, and we, or yes, all the billing through August, and we've already received some of payments so far. So we're pleased with their services.
Thank you. Heather?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up, to confirm the dates I was sharing with you on the infrastructure planning. We do have to get our infrastructure request for an extension in by June 2021, so we need the plans done by February 2021. So those were accurate dates in the staff report and presentation.
Thank you. Kylie?
Just two brief updates. One, on our classification and compensation project. The city has retained Gallagher benefits to handle that project. We've been working with them for a few weeks now, but wanted to officially let you know who we're working with. They felt like they were most in alignment with our project specifications, and will deliver us a product that should last 15 to 20 years if we maintain it really well. So I'm very excited about that. And that project's going quite well, and will take, as I mentioned in a presentation with the council, six to eight months to complete. So we'll have more updates as we achieve project milestones. Also, we've begun to develop the NeoGov applicant tracking system. So starting in early October, our website under the HR page will have a bit of a different feel. If you go on there, and I'll, I'll send out links as those come available, we'll have a much more sophisticated recruitment process, and it'll all be handled online, and I am just super pumped about it. So that's moving right along. Thanks.
Thank you. Melissa? David? And Jeff?
Just one last thing. I'll be out of the office for most of the day next Friday, helping volunteer the local fundraiser.
Thank you. That takes us to one resolution that we had this evening, and we're considering Resolution 2019-60, a resolution appointing city representative to the Economic Leadership Council. So we'll call in Heather to run us through that.
Yes, so this is your, this is the Economic Vitality Leadership Council. It's a new council that's been established to implement and guide the Economic Development Strategic Plan, MACTOWN 2032. The enabling ordinance for this is embedded in our city code, but it is a partnership-oriented council. So the city, each partner agency, Visit McMinnville, McMinnville Downtown Association, the Chamber of Commerce, MEDP, and the city have two appointments to this council. Mac Warner and Light has one, the school district has one, and then there's three members at large. Tonight is the recommendation for the two appointments from the city to the council. We have gotten the appointments already from the other partner agencies, except for the school district. They're still working on theirs. And we want to get this council together so that they can start the work and make their recommendations for the three at-large members. In visiting with the city manager, we thought it would be important to have both the city counselor and a representative from MIRAC on this Economic Development Vitality Leadership Council because of the work that's being done in the urban renewal district. So MIRAC voted to recommend Walt Gallow at their last meeting, and Kelly Manke has volunteered to represent the city council. The appointments are for three years, so we're recommending the appointment be through December 30, 2022.
Thank you. Any discussions on the two nominees for representing the city? Then I will take a motion to approve Resolution Number 2019-60.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Been moved by Remy and seconded by Wendy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. The resolution passes unanimously six to zero. And that takes us to the conclusion of our meeting. We will now be moving into executive session, and so we'll conclude this meeting.